We're officially resumed. We're going to ask Dick Ostap, the Chair of Public Building Committee, to explain to the Board of Selectmen's report. Thank you, Dick.
If I can, I'd like to share my honor and pride to serve in the Senior Center of Eno Memorial Subcommittee for the Board of Selectmen, along with other dedicated members and staff. It was quite interesting. The members of this study committee were giving a dedication to do, to look into four things. They had a program they had to do. So they were kind of limited in what they could do. However, the Public Building Committee, which started this project back on June of 2012, retained an architect, performed a needs study assessment with the staff, and some design options. We looked at many sites throughout Simsbury and developed a number of preliminary costs. And also, members of both committees visited a number of other active senior centers within the area, including Agawam and so on and so forth. And surprising enough, just for those that don't know, most of those, all of those, as a matter of fact, they visited, were not located in downtown areas. They were outside of the so-called downtown. At our final meeting of the Board of Selectmen's Subcommittee, it was voted by nine members present that we should consider a new facility. And based on that, we were really given four areas to look at. One, the Bush, Hill, Stratton, and Brook Road site. Another, just a new site in the center of Simsbury. Then a selected site of the Performing Arts. And then one selected nothing, just a new facility. So I think the area that was most concerned was that most people felt there should be a new facility. The Eno just did not work for the senior center. While the needs assessments identified a minimum space required of 22,000 square feet, which is available at Eno, but much of it has been reserved for the historic space layout, the auditorium retunda, the Blue Room, the D.A.R. rooms, the auditorium, we felt that it really couldn't work out well for the needs program that was available or that they wanted. Therefore, new construction, we thought would be required either at a new facility and/or an addition to the Eno. When we looked at addition for the Eno, and of course, you all heard earlier tonight, that parking became a major extent. So we started looking at a parking deck. And I know some people brought it up, that parking deck is one way. Yes, it is. But anyways, to make a long story short, the committee, I think, would like to have a greater effort to look at perhaps more of a way from the Eno and not just pick on one site at this point. I don't think we looked at enough sites around that it might be available. And I think the committee would like to suggest that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Public Building Committee to further study open area sites for a possibility of a new facility, other than spending most of their time on the Eno. I think most of the committee feels that way. And we feel that there are sites available down on Iron Horse Boulevard, along the way. I think there's sites that could be looked at very carefully and come up with more prevalent cost and programs. And I don't know if you, we've gone through a lot of things, or we have, Rich sitting here, be willing to go through our study that we did, but I don't think, I think we all did that. You had copies of that available to you. I don't know if that's necessarily not. But I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, your committee, and to the Subcommittee as well, and to everyone who attended. Does the board want to hear the review of the additional information that we had heard earlier from Rich? Thoughts?
I was going to say, I think we've heard the presentation a number of times. The one, I will say, the one bit that came out most recently, and I can't remember, Ed Lamontagne gave such a good chronology of all of the various reports that were done. But there was discussion about the phased-in at Eno. And yet, that aspect in a cost analysis was not part of what was provided to us. So I just throw out that as...
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you. And I really did want to thank everybody who came and spoke tonight. And a special thanks to the committee. Those folks worked really hard. And Ed and others really enumerated all the places they went. And I know it was quite amazing when they dragged them around on a bus halfway around the state to look at places. But it was very instructional and educational in terms of what's out there. I do have the boards here are basically the three major options that were looked at. If you do want to see them, I could run through them quickly. Basically, we looked at Eno. And the conclusion was that in order to respect the historic aspects of the building, we had to put an addition on. And parking became an issue. Parking deck's a possibility. I do want to tell you, though, that what we looked at on the deck was not part of any of those committees' principal charges. So it was not looked at in depth. There are some other options. I want to emphasize it's a deck and not a parking garage. It's open, the lower levels, open at least half size. However, it will cost you. Don't let me kid you. They're not cheap. The second thing we looked at was a new building on a new site. We did look at some detail at Bushy and Stratton. However, the building we looked at is fairly generic. It could go on other vacant sites in the center. As a little aside, we also did look at some existing buildings. And, you know, while we perhaps could go out there and make a firm offer, on the casual discussion level, most people's timing is very vague. Yeah, it's kind of a cool idea someday. You know, I think we're all at the point, after all the effort folks have put into this, that it's really kind of decision time. The decision we need is to pick a location. It could be general, if it's to be a new site in the center. And that would allow us, through the Public Building Committee, to go forth, refine the design, refine the cost estimates. And that's really what we need. We've been working on a needs assessment that looked at what had to be provided from a prudent point of view, what the size would be. And then we put a number to it. But to go beyond that and get down to a number that's more realistic, we need a choice of a site to look at. Specifically to the question of Eno with a smaller addition, we did take a look at that. And what that would involve is a design that would provide for phased future construction, or to use what in the business today is called distributed services. And what that means, from a senior center's point of view, you would provide a building with all the most important core services. The food service, the kitchen, certain arts and crafts, medical screening. And then, your services such as computer training, computer room library would in fact be at the library. Your outdoor activity space and outdoor performance space would be at the Performing Arts Center. So that works out very interestingly. That's somewhat of a new concept, but I think you do have the opportunity to do that here. And that phased-in construction at Eno was predicated on that idea, that we would actually put some things elsewhere. And that option would be about $1 million cheaper. So what we're looking at, and I'm only going to speak to the building costs, and that's very important. You get a lot of folks that get in the very heated discussions about what does the building cost and the project cost. And if folks want a happy face, they always tell you the building cost. If they want a sad face, oh, the project cost. But those project costs are the area where you can really trim things up. In our traditional full build-outs in town, your so-called soft costs are about 30% to 40%. But those numbers can be played with a lot. So what I will tell you is just the building costs. Right now, the building costs alone, and these are this year's costs, we did project them ahead. At Eno, without the parking deck, you're around 5.1 million. A new site would be around 5.2. And the full build-out at Eno would be around 7. something. So there are savings in the smaller design. And the assumption was that we would also completely excavate the back of that building and redo the parking lot, but retaining well along Railroad Street. And we could get more spaces. The optimum number of spaces is 100. We could not get 100 spaces.
What could you get?
Sixteen more.
We could get, that's about right. Yeah, we could get, right now, there's...
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, and...
Double.
We could just about double it. That's correct.
And you picked 100 because that's 80% of...
A hundred spaces is what works out for, what you call your 80% design.
Right.
For infrequent, peak usage type building, just seldom build 100% because they wouldn't get used much.
So at our peak usage time, we have 147?
It would probably be some more. Yeah. And of course, a new site can lend itself to adding those spaces. And some of the facilities we visited did that. In fact, Lebanon, I believe, did not build out all their parking. Right now, in terms of population, the Simsbury has about 7,000 people that are over 55. And over the planning period, 20-year planning period, we expect that to grow to nine. And, you know, that's very hard to predict. But if you look at straight lining out, the projections and what's been happening, it's fairly reasonable. Right now, for unduplicated senior center users, at about 975 people a year that use that facility, and that's not doing any double counting, average daily use is about 144.
And of those 970, how often are they at the senior center each day? Are they there once the whole year? Are they there multiple times?
It varies a lot. I mean, your big programs down there, as Mona mentioned, is your food, your meals, your, a number of your classes are very popular. There are performance events, musical events, very popular, exercise facilities. But there are a number of activities that are missing from our center that are indeed found at other facilities. One of the biggest ones, believe it or not, is, guess what? Who wants to guess? It's for the men. Billiards are a big deal. Every single center we visited had a billiard facility, every one of them. And we went through a couple of the buildings that were basically vacant, except that billiard one. Be under full use. Ladies use it, too. So that was interesting. Health screening is a very big deal. A lot of senior center, senior folks like some of those screenings to be done privately and quietly. And nearly all the facilities had a health screening area. Not a big one. I mean, we're not talking the walking medical facility here. Eno also serves as our social services center. We don't have any really secure confidential interview space. And that's a big lacking feature in that building. But I do think that phased program has some merit. But I do think that in the center of Simsbury, and as Dick mentioned, if you looked at the total aggregate votes, it was clear that a new center is what would meet the needs. And people that picked a new center ranged anywhere from New Eno, which is basically the full build-out, to the Performing Arts Center, the Stratton-Bushy, and to any new site in the center. But the vast majority of them wanted a new site in the center. And we certainly have those sites. We looked at the Performing Arts Center in quite a bit of detail. The Performing Arts Center is a very interesting location because you could get intergenerational activities going on, you could have shared spaces. But the Performing Arts Center site, for your main focus, and this is in my opinion, has become too popular. If you go down there, I mean, you've got dog park people, boundless playground people, 298 soccer players at once. I don't know how they fit them all on there. But anyway, the place is very vital and active. So if there's anybody concerned with how folks are going to get in and out of the parking deck, well, exactly how they're going to get in and out of the Performing Arts Center on a lot of days is a bit of a challenge. But I think the Performing Arts Center could be a secondary location for certain activities. And you could get exercise classes in there, certain outdoor activities where you're not using the rest of the place. Good possibilities. We also looked at the Iron Horse Boulevard lots. Very excellent potential in there for either a full-service facility or, again, a smaller facility that would do that distributed type activities, where you could do your computer stuff at the library, you could do some things at Eno. We've also looked at a couple other sites on the east side of Iron Horse. I will be very honest with you that there are certain environmental issues over there. But in the world of picking projects, you do have to do some trade-offs. And interesting enough, the wetland regulations allow trade-offs to be considered. So if we're going to look at Bushy Hill Stratton, look at the environmental values there, and look at some of the trade-offs along Iron Horse, well, those may be less impactful, and it would be a good choice. So I think I've hit the populations. Operating costs...
Oh, that was my question.
We did not get into personnel costs because those very much depend on the programs. You could leave Eno with the exact staff you have now, supplement it with a lot of volunteers, and you probably wouldn't need any. On the building and maintenance side of the business, if I may say so, you'll probably need some more staff anyway. So you would be doing, they also do a roving maintenance now. They don't station people in a building. So if you got to add a half a person and add a half more, it's not a big deal. So what I did take a look at was the utility, operations costs in the buildings. And basically, a new building, a full-service new building, it cost around $60,000 a year to operate. At Eno, dependent if you did the phased-in construction or the full construction, your operation costs probably run around 11,000 to 22,000. Other new, smaller facilities, I think, would be less than 60,000. But any of our new buildings would be pretty cost-effective in terms of power and heat. Although, it is interesting to note that Eno is a very efficient building in terms of heat. Little aside.
That's interesting.
Well, some people have asked, if we pulled out of Eno, what would we do with Eno? Well, quite honestly, Eno would go back to its traditional use, which really was a showcase community facility and town office. If you're going to preserve those historic aspects of the building, you're not going to turn it into a real active, 100% senior center or social service. You have the D.A.R. room, which is dedicated heated use. You've got the beautiful rotunda. You've got a real high-performance auditorium. You've got the Blue Room, which is, I would like my office there, fireplace, the whole works. Basically, in terms of other use in that building that you could really chop up for a senior center, you only got four rooms in that place. The two rooms upstairs, two rooms in the basement. That's about it. But at Eno, you could put your performing arts, your regular arts, the D.A.R. would stay. You could have big performances in the auditorium. You could move the regional probate court down there, which we're pretty strapped for space in this building. You could leave your SCTV there. In your phased-in program, you're assuming you're going to pull SCTV out of there. In your full build-out, you would keep them there at a lower level, which would be a black-room type studio, which is desirable for them. So Eno could have many uses. It would not go wanting for use. What else was I going to say? I think that's it.
Thank you, Rich. Discussion?
Rich, could you show us on your chart there which other Iron Horse Boulevard properties you're talking about when you refer to other sites on Iron Horse?
Well, they won't all be on our board. But the other sites we looked at in the center, they are up on the web. We looked at in depth a total of six sites, but we actually looked at some 11 sites. In the center, we looked at the library. The library, at first glance, was a very exciting possibility.
Yeah.
But the library always has issues with parking already. And unless you want to get involved with a real heavy-duty deed change, the library doesn't own much land. Scout Hall, for all practical purposes, owns none. So you could get into the forest in the back, building town forest, requires a heavy-duty deed change.
I was thinking more of the Iron Horse Boulevard.
The, we looked at a location on Drake Hill Place, just south of Iron Horse Boulevard. Even though when you drive by there, it looks pretty big, it's highly impacted by floodwaters and rail right-of-way and a lot of, and as you say, well, we could get the rail right-of-way. There's major communication cables in there. Big bucks. We then looked at the Performing Arts Center, which I described in some detail. We looked at two sites on Iron Horse Boulevard in the lots. And while we didn't look in real depth at this, we looked at the corner of Drake Hill Road and Iron Horse Boulevard. There's a large parcel in there. That's a very interesting-looking site. It would require some environmental trade-offs, though. But it's quite buildable.
Iron Horse and the sewer...
The sewer plant, yeah, between their driveway. It's an interesting site. It has a little brook on one side that you could preserve. It has a high tree background in the north. But I don't want to kid people. There's some wetland issues. But you'd have to do the trade-off. But the wetland regulations allows you to do that. And if you do mitigation, I think it's worth a look. So I think, and just, I don't really want to name the buildings we looked at, but there were some interested building owners. But were they able to move quickly? And I really frame that word quickly due to the fact that these folks have been looking at this study for three years. So if you can tell me, yes, they'll decide in two, three weeks, well, that's cool. I don't think that's going to happen. By the way, the first senior center study, where'd Don go? It wasn't done in 1913.
Ninety-eight.
But your first study was done in 1988. And there's only a couple people that remember that. And I will tell you, the end results ended up the same place where we're at tonight, with virtually the same sites. But again, their conclusion was, Eno certainly had a lot of merit. They did look at a couple alternatives. But if you want to build it into a full-service senior center, at least based on the other ones we looked at, it won't be free. So...
The other site you looked at, that everyone keeps talking about, kind of avoiding in their conversation, is Iron Horse Boulevard directly behind Fitzgerald. Everyone keeps talking about that, the bus stop. We looked very carefully at that. And we think it'd be an ideal site. However, it is not owned by the town, it's owned by the state of Connecticut. And that is a major problem. Though, Rich has said several times, there's been some negotiations going on there. And we're still not sure where that is. So that site also is very popular by anyone that wants a new site. But again, it's being held back by the state, reference to the old track that went through there.
We do believe that the state, in principle, has agreed to release that land. And they'd probably be fairly well inclined to release it for municipal purposes.
If we pushed it harder.
But that's something that I know our planning department's been looking at. And I think the state's mainly been looking for use.
If that site were available to you, is that a site you would prefer over the other ones?
I would. That's obviously an excellent site. Although, you know, when you look at the center studies, it has been indicated a lot of mixed uses go down there. They're highly buildable sites. Now, let me tell you that every site we look at has an angle to it.
Right.
The Iron Horse Boulevard lots also have this great big fiber optic cable right through the middle of it and about a 36-inch sewer line. So there's always a little quirk. But the operative word here is, it's all about trade-offs. So if we're looking to preserve natural contiguous forest land, well, I guess we're going to have to move a sewer. What am I telling you? There's not one silver bullet one out there that's going to cost you a half million bucks. Speaking of that, very important, with the grants we have, Representative Hampton, with the donations, and with money we have appropriated, we have close to a half million dollars to move on to the next stage. I mean, that would pay for full design, geotechnicals, utilities, and some construction. The other important thing to note is that every now and then, there seems to be a little baffledness about where's the money coming from. We have $5.75 million programmed in our capital program for fiscal year '16. It does need vote of approval. But the fact is, in terms of how can we afford it, that is programmed in and meets the 7% guideline on our debt policy. So the monies are programmed. And sometimes, you got to look at this from the point of view of opportunity because, I'll cut to the chase. I mean, I bet you I could save that money, but I bet you won't. You'll reassign it. And I've had people say that to me. We can't afford the senior center because we could use that money for something else. So that's kind of my editorializing. But I think the opportunity is here. And again, these folks have done an excellent job. All of these reports, by the way, are on the town website. You can all look at them. They're complete. The only one that's not is the 1988 study. This is probably the last one.
I would love to see that, actually.
And I have hard copies. Jeff Shea back here is ably taking my place. He has all hard copies in his office if anyone wants to see them.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Excellent job. Thank you very much. Further discussion?
Thank you, Rich.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah. At what point does the Board of Finance jump in here and say how much we can spend?
The capital, the processes, the Board of Selectmen has put the 5.7, as Rich said, in our capital plan. It's in there. The Board of Finance has reviewed it. They are aware of it. It does fit within the debt level, so the funding is there. So they would have to approve it, but the funding is part of the capital plan.
The answer more directly is, the Board of Selectmen authorized the Public Building Committee to do A, B, C, whatever it is. We then, now and now, that then goes back to the Board of Finance. That's what the Board of Finance...
So there's a placeholder until we recommend it.
Right.
Right. So the Board of Finance could come back and say, no, we have this other project. We need to work in the same timeframe. You can only spend $4 million, not $6 million.
But, but, the Board of Selectmen would have to approve that. So they can't be done in a lateral.
Just a comment, Mary, to, on Rich's, in talking about the capital improvement plan. And I wish I brought that information with me tonight. I know we reviewed a lot, a lot of that during the budget process. And some scenarios, and I think the one he's speaking to, included bonding for 15 years for some of those projects. And being in an exceeding scenario of the 7%, if we stuck to a 10-year bond. So I just think it's...
It mostly included the school projects. It was the school projects that didn't fit. Now, not the senior center. The senior center was the smaller projects. The school projects that didn't fit.
Yes, but I mean, other than...
Recommendation for 15-year bonds was for the school projects, not the senior center project.
That's right. Though, the approval that we would have to make would be on the projects for the entire year that would include sort of all of those things working together, so that something would have to be bonded for 15 years.
But it was only the size of the school projects is why it didn't fit, not the senior center.
Yes.
Generally, any projects under 6 million will fit pretty well. As soon as you start taking a simplified approach to 6 million, you're going to have to charge.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So the senior center would be a 10-year bond project. Yes.
I understand. I guess what I'm trying to say is, as we look at the CIP plan, and as we were given scenarios of Plan A and Plan B, all of those projects in that plan at this point, if we were to fund and keep to our 7% debt policy, would require us to bond something at 15 years versus 10. So I just, I think it's important that the public knows that that's, you know, it's a fiscal policy that I don't feel comfortable with to go beyond 10, beyond 10 years. And, you know, a lot of people speak to the fact that these projects are, have a useful life that's greater than that. And so that can justify the bonding for that. But we also know that there's many projects that continue to come down the pike. And if we were to have bonded a lot of projects we've approved already for those longer periods of time, we wouldn't be in a situation right now where we could afford to bond some of the things we're looking forward to bonding. So...
Well, that's a philosophical discussion because, you know, we, rates have gone down. So had we bonded for a longer period of time, we actually would be saving money. So there's a lot of different things to say. And I think a lot of people made some good points tonight. The fact that we are reducing taxes, that's because of a lot of hard work and cutting on the Board of Ed side. But primarily because the Board of Ed enrollment's declined. And so I think what we're seeing is, three-quarters of our budget is the Board of Ed budget. So without the Board of Ed reducing their budget, we would not have had a tax decrease. Because we decreased the town budget the last six years. Eno had been in office, and taxes haven't gone down. Because we have seen increasing budgets on the Board of Ed side, which is three-quarters of the town budget. So the fact that the senior center isn't a placeholder, the fact that it is a 10-year bond, regardless of where the site is, I think the time is now to move the project forward. And it is fiscally responsible because it isn't our five-year plan. And we are, we are ready to go. We waited a long time. And I was supporting tonight to move the project forward because it does fit within our capital plan.
I agree with that. Thank you. I did, because I always try and figure out, well, what does it mean for me? And so I did contact Joe Mancini and Nick Mason from the Board of Finance. I said, Joe, I said to them, guys, what does this mean for me? Average Joe, taxpayer, what are we talking about? And if a senior center costs, we bond out for 10 years on a $5 million project, the cost per year is $625,000, and that assumes a 3% interest rate. This translates into about $50 per year or $4 per household to do that. Right now, when you say it fits within the debt, seeing what that means, what's going to happen? Talking with Joe Manci, I know this is really complicated. And I'm going to do my best to explain it. And I'm sure Nick and Joe could do it better. But we bonded out for a long period on the high school. And we're paying that... But we bonded out for a long period on the high school, and we're paying that off still. And that's going to drop off. And the minute that drops off, we can then bond for the high school. So what the net effect to the taxpayer is a no change in taxes. Now, you can say, for the senior center, now you say, well, okay, no change in taxes, but we could actually save money if we didn't do it. And what would that savings be? That would be $50 a year or $4 a month. If we went with 8 million, because some of the estimates are coming in at 8 million, and we'll have to double-check the numbers because I asked them to do this very quickly. And I think Joe was using an assumption of 12,000 homes and Nick was using an assumption of 8,500 homes. So I'll have to get clarification. But what Nick came up was on 8 million, using the same assumption of 3%, it would be 89 per household per year. So in terms of what the costs are and what it means to you and me, we're talking less than 100 a year, which is not to say it's not significant. It is. I know people who are living on a fixed income. That's a lot of money. But in terms of what it will mean for your taxes, if the high school bonding drops off, your taxes will stay flat. You could save anywhere, let's just say 50 to 100 a year, or someone's going to have to help me with math, but less than $10 a month you'd be saving. So in terms of that, in terms of the actual cost, and then I just wanted to say, I spoke with Elizabeth Estes' office today because there's a lot of talk about, well, how can we get money? Kudos to John for getting some money from the state, from Mary, for your efforts. And Estes' office is going to be looking into federal grants to assist us with that as well. So there are opportunities to even reduce that spending. So the question is, well, do we want to do this? Do we care enough to do this? Do we see, are the needs going unmet? Is there something we want to put our resources to? And are these resources we can afford as a community? We know that seniors are a vibrant part of the community. When they stay here, they don't add to the cost of the schools, you know. Intergenerational things, I mean, I think one of the comments made tonight, which really struck me as wonderful, was, gone are the days of, this is mine, this is mine, this is mine, this is mine. I want to do, we're a community. We take care of everyone. We're going to take care of our kids. We're going to take care of our seniors. We're going to take care of families that are starting out and who are never going to get a pension that our seniors are getting, who are never going to get the same amount of social security. We have to take care of them, too. We are a community. We have to take care of everyone. And so that's, when we think about this, we're not thinking about any one segment. We're thinking, what's best for our community? Because we're all going to be there. We're all going to be young people starting out. We're all going to be middle-aged. Some of us will have children, some of us won't. We're all going to be seniors. And so it's a continuum. Life's a circle. And so what's going to make a healthy community? And that's sort of how I look at it. And then can we afford it? So we have to look at, and I know I'm kind of rambling a bit because I'm not feeling that well. So...
I think your point is, we'll take Lisa, it's $50 based on the numbers per year with the 10-year bond. It's in our capital plan. We haven't, we don't have sites, and we can't get grants. So that's $50.
Or a budget.
Right. We already have a half a million dollars, thanks to Ensign Bickford, thanks to the state funds from John Hampton. So once we have a site, once we have a design, then we can go after grants, and we know we're really good at getting grants. So, you know, that is further going to be reduced. So I think our motion, I think the motion tonight that I like to make is that we accept the Public Building Committee's recommendation that we eliminate the Bushy Hill Stratton site. I think it's important to put that on the record because I don't think that serves our community. We spent a lot of money, a lot of time looking at walkable, livable, making sure that our transportation's not walkable. Spent a lot of money building sidewalks in the center of town, spending a lot of money on the center. So I think, first of all, my motion would be that we eliminate the Bushy Hill Stratton site, that we focus on. Two things I'd like to see, one is, I know Eno cannot be a full senior center with, the cost would be too high and the build-out would not be accommodating. I'd like to see what level of renovations at Eno we could accommodate to use that building. I think something has to be done. It's not usable for anybody right now because it just doesn't work, the parking doesn't work. So I'd like to look at two things, to accept the Public Building Committee report, eliminate Bushy Hill Stratton, look at the amount of build-out for Eno for future use and a new site in the center of town. And I'd ask the Public Building Committee to come back and not be bound by the not publicly-owned restriction. I'd like you to specifically look at anything in the center of town. And that frees the Public Building Committee to talk to existing property owners. I know we have done that, and I won't divulge confidential conversations. I know what the answer will be because I had those conversations, but I would like the public to know what those are. And I would like the state properties to be explored. And I do think we need to move this. I do think we need to move it tonight. So that would be my motion.
I would add a friendly amendment to that. As you evaluate, Eno, a couple of things that I would want specifically looked at and evaluated would be, can we make it light-filled? Because I know that there are some questions in terms of their existing windows that are high up. Can they be moved down?
Oh, they can't.
They cannot.
We've already gone there.
But if you could put that in the report, I want to make sure that there's a cover and entry, handicapped accessible. I want a full evaluation. Can this be handicapped accessible? It can't be, we're done. Because I don't see any point in having a senior center that people can't get into.
I do want to comment, if I could, Lisa, on that. The handicap bathrooms, one of the beauty, the beautiful things about Eno was a gift from the Eno family. We can't forget that beautiful gift that we were given. But it comes with restrictions. I think some of the frustrations that Don experienced in the bathroom was because we couldn't find the doors that met the historic requirements and the marble that was going to be installed. We couldn't just put in any doors. And I know we were frustrated, Don was frustrated, but we had to meet the letter of the law. We had to meet the historic respect of the building. And so, you know, we want to honor the gift, and we don't want to overuse it, overabuse it. And I think that's what we're wrestling with. What's the most we can push that building to accommodate our needs? And if it doesn't serve the senior center, we've got to have a site ready to go.
And as I, I mean, the other things I really am asking the committee to discuss is really examine whether there's any way to get that. I don't think 60 parking spots is adequate. And room for increased programming, make sure that we have an adequate increased programming and entrances and exits on two levels. There needs to be, if the elevator goes out, on the two levels.
How about second? Is that your second?
Yes. I have a motion next. Questions? Well, I would also like them to consider operating costs as part of this ongoing discussion of the overall costs. And I know that Rich has done some of that, but the different sides are going to have different operating costs, and those are going to affect our budget year to year. So, you know, to Lisa's point, when we're talking about how much it's going to cost us as taxpayers every year to run and staff this new center or increased-size center, whatever we end up doing, you know, there are going to be additional costs that are not going to go away with the bond. They are going to continue to be there. And I think we have to be aware of that. And maybe it will take some input from the current senior center staff at Social Services to say if we're going to have, you know, a health services area, someone has to staff that, you know. If we're going to do, you know, those are going to be costs that need to be considered.
I just want to point out that we did just approve additional square footage for the Board of Ed, and that question was not asked.
Absolutely. And I think it should, yeah.
In fairness, if you're going to ask, you know, what, you should ask it of every bill.
I would love to ask that at the Board of Ed if I had that.
It wasn't asked during the session.
...in reference to the healthcare. So that's done by outsourced. Cost of time.
So we can get that from there.
But all of those things are going to be ongoing costs, and it's not just the CIP budget, it's the operating budget.
And the same thing with the library, the square footage at the library, you know, I mean, point's well taken, but I think if you're going to ask that, I think that's an important valuation for all new projects, not just the senior center.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure it's there, so we're looking at it.
I do as well.
I just want to thank everyone who came out tonight because I look in this audience and I see my friends, and I see people who agree and disagree, and I love you both equally. And this is a tough decision, and I appreciate, the comments were so respectful of each other, so polite, so substantive. It was, it makes me proud to be in this position, to have you helping us make the best decision. I'm so proud of you. I'm so proud of this community, and I really want to emphasize that. And then at the end of the day, once we make our choice, whatever it is, there are going to be some people who think we made the wrong choice and people who think we made the right choice. I hope that after we make the choice, we come together and say, okay, this is what it is. It wasn't my first choice, but I'm going to work like heck to make it the best we can make it. And that's what I'm hoping will happen at the end of all this. So again, thank you to everyone here because as I look out, there are so many people I love. So thank you.
Here, here. Yeah. And I would like to echo Lisa's comments. I think what we've done here tonight has been a compromise of people's input, and so it's hard for us to make these choices. And, you know, we have people calling us and stopping us in Fitzgeralds and, you know, talking to us along the way. And yet, as you come into these meetings, the crux of a lot of this, I hate to say it, a lot of people don't watch SETV. They're not listening to all the great input that you folks are providing. And so we try to go out and share that with people as well so we can educate them so they're not making decisions that aren't well-informed as well. So, and I do just want to clarify, too, my comments regarding the capital project is simply to say that we know tonight we're here to make this decision about the senior center, but you all realize that we make decisions that impact all aspects of our community. And I know we're talking about this being a senior center, but in the reality of it, it will be a community center. It will have the best and highest use for the seniors, but as we talk about a lot of things that are economic development-driven, it's all, and a woman made a great comment about sort of the way that things are changing now. They're changing back towards mixed use, towards the livability of our downtown center, towards the integration of generations, working together, playing together, recreating together. And, you know, Lisa's work at the Great Program and the high schools is bringing the seniors together with the kids. All that stuff is what this should be all about. And so, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I got one more. I agree with a lot of the comments that were made tonight. Mona?
She didn't want to talk before now.
Bust in. That's why we have fun. Even though our, we are planning on bonding the money for the senior/community center in 2016, I am concerned about the impact with not knowing what's going on with the Hartford. You know, we can plan on spending half a million dollars, but suddenly we've got a $2 million hole in the budget. Add this back into it because we're adding the dollars back in. Not saying it's not a good project. I'm not saying the seniors don't deserve it. They do. But the whole community deserves it, and that's where we've got to go. I have that concern. My understanding is this will still come back to the Board of Selectmen.
Absolutely.
And also to the voters in the form of a referendum.
Yeah, and just the point is, this is the least of your problems.
I...
I don't mean it facetiously.
But I'm not going to pile on top.
I don't mean it facetiously, but there's a lot of other projects, road paving, that cost half of what this project costs. School, we're talking about millions and millions of dollars in school projects.
I understand.
So this is, and I don't mean to be facetious because I'm serious, this is already in the plan two years out. We, if we have problems with the Hartford and we're working hard to address and work with them, we have a problem tomorrow, not two years out. We have plenty of time to turn this boat around if a problem occurs before 2016 occurs. So I think we're being very responsible, and I appreciate your raising that, Mike, but there are a lot, there's 2014, 15, before we get to 16.
No, I could do the math in the calendar, no doubt. But everybody needs to understand that these are incremental steps, and we're headed down a path. I think it's the right path. I think looking at a variety of sites. I think somewhere in the center of town is my personal opinion where this belongs, whether it's, I forget the fancy term that Rich used about the differential sites, moving to various sites. I like that idea.
Distributed services.
Distributed services. That's why he's the man he is. But you be answering my question, so, okay.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did everybody vote?
Four, five.
Five votes in favor. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Don't all leave.
Be quiet.
I want to leave. Moving very quickly, we have a...
You guys can go. She's joking.
Request to modify the town's banner policy. I just want to put this in perspective. We currently, I think an update, you've got an update, we currently, the policy we currently follow is that the town does not charge for banners across Route 10. Those are allowed to be used by any nonprofit for town activities only. So that's very clear. The Performing Arts Board, when they were a town board, installed the light posts along Iron Horse Boulevard to advertise only the concert series. So that's the second policy we've been following. The Performing Arts Board, when they were a town board, and I'll clarify, installed the banner across Iron Horse Boulevard to advertise only policies, only town projects. And then finally, the Route 10 banners. Those were proposed by Main Street. They were supposed to be used only for town activities. We asked Main Street to administer the banners. They were, they did administer the banners, they did charge for the banners and put them up, and the town staff put this up. Last year, if you recall, the Chamber of Commerce asked as a nonprofit to put commercial use, to use the banner poles. They did, we did allow it as a one-time exception because it did not violate, but it was not consistent with our policy to only allow nonprofits for town-sponsored activities. The chamber did charge for the use of the banners. They did, they did receive the revenue. The town received no revenue from the sale of the banners. So the Treasury Chamber has asked us to change the Route 10 banner policy. I strongly recommend not changing the policy because, number one, it is town property and the town needs to control the property. Number two, if we allow any nonprofit to use the banner poles, then we have no control over what the message will be. And so if the town is going to use the poles, we should derive the revenue, and we shouldn't allow other nonprofits to take the funding. The board asked town attorney Bob DiCrescenzo to be here tonight. They had some questions on the banner policy. And so, Bob, thank you for your patience in being here. And I just will ask Bob, I asked Bob for a legal opinion. I think, Tom, that was provided to the board. So I did get a legal opinion from counsel, which recommends some issues that we would have if we did change the policy. So Bob, if you could just quickly summarize your recommendations, and then we'll open up for discussion.
Yes, thank you. I was asked to look at this, and I want to start by distinguishing between the banner that goes over Hop Meadow Street and the 19 banners on the poles because the rules appear to be somewhat different. In a nutshell, because it's Route 10, because it's a state highway, it's subject to the state encroachment permit process, which brings it under the regulation, which I believe I provided or referenced in my letter. And essentially, the state DOT district has, will apply the state regulations...
It's not yours?
...to any request to use the banners, the banner pole locations. And I suggested in my letter that any, any policy that expands beyond town-sponsored events should be subject to review by the DOT because ultimately, they're the ones that will decide whether or not a particular banner or a series of banners can be hung on the poles on Route 10. I think you are free to write a policy that makes the change requested. However, that policy is subject to DOT regulation. I also put in my letter a cautionary note about because it is a town facility, it's subject to the requirements and restrictions of the First Amendment to the United States Constitution and the cases that interpret. And I believe they would ultimately, if it were ever challenged, it would, the banners And I believe they would ultimately, if it were ever challenged, it would, the banners would be found to be what's called a limited public forum, as distinguished from a general public forum. Town Hall is a general public forum, place where open debate takes place, and that's where the highest level of scrutiny, scrutiny and the lowest level of regulation as to the content of speech applies. And then the other extreme is a non-public forum, where just the opposite is true. Somewhere in the middle is a limited public forum, and I believe the banners would be that. Now, what does that mean? That means that if you were to change the policy, I believe it'd be very important to draft a set of policy guidelines that were dictated by the various cases that, from the United States Supreme Court and the district courts, that define the restrictions municipalities and public entities can put in place on content within limited public forums. You cannot distinguish, in a limited public forum, you cannot distinguish based on content.
Right.
You cannot place a prior restraint on a banner or any other message within a, you can, however, distinguish between classes of organizations that are eligible for use of the limited public forum. Let me give you a quick example. You can say, as part of your policy, no political organizations may use the banner, because you, as the legislative body, don't want political speech on those banners. And I think that would be upheld. However, you can't say, if you allow political organizations to use the banners, you can't say, one party can use it and another party can't. I mean, that sounds, that kind of rubs against the grain, no matter, you know, that's simple to understand. Not so simple, though, is minor parties aimed at one particular issue that organize and get status under our statutes, that want to promulgate a message on your banners that you don't want promulgated on the Main Street. It may be an issue-oriented party that technically would be a political organization. So unless the policy is narrowly crafted to exclude the class of political organizations, I'm only picking on political organizations, because, you know, there's lots of other types of organizations that would fall in this category as well. You could not limit the speech, the content of the speech on that pole, based on the content of the speech. You can limit the type of organizations that are available. If you broaden the policy, all of these forum-based analysis and restrictions have to be taken into consideration for the policy that's drafted. Ultimately, though, it's, once you do that, I suggest having the DOT district review them, because ultimately, they're, along with the zoning commission, they're, that's the entity that's going to decide whether a banner can or cannot be put on the pole. As to the banner across the street, the regulations, I think, are a little bit stricter, and I think those are allowed for town-sponsored functions. I personally have never seen a banner across the street that has any kind of general business purpose to it. And I think you know now, from looking at the research and other things, that DOT will allow a banner to be hung by a private nonprofit organization, such as the Chamber. They will allow that banner to be sponsored, but they will not allow that banner to contain too much of a commercial message, because commercial, commercial messages are not allowed within the area regularly invited to DOT.
Here's my concern, Bob. I just, and the reason I'm glad you're here, is that the town staff, we have very limited staff, and they are responsible for putting these banners up and taking them down. The banners have been used, so they're town property. What's happening now is the banners are now being resold by the private nonprofits, and the revenue is going to the nonprofit. So it's becoming a revenue source for the nonprofits that use the town property. There's a concern that if one, let's use your political party example. Let's say one political party comes in, and they reserve the banners, and they put a nice message out, nothing offensive, that says, you know, keeps things very beautiful.
Right.
But they sell them for $500, and the banners cost $25, and that's a revenue source. The other party comes in and says, well, now we want the banners. But there, there's not enough time to give those banners until, you know, another, another year passes. So you've, you've given one political party the benefit of using town property to generate revenue. That's my concern. And so, you know, I think the intent of the banners was to publicize town events, was to have the town do it as a public service, not to generate revenue for any particular nonprofit. And, you know, perhaps we've got to the point where there, there's too much of a good thing if we can't regulate. I just, I think the town is going to be in a very bad position to allow one nonprofit to generate revenue from town property and not other. Because once folks see that they can sell the banners for $450, or $350, which they were recently sold for, this is going to be a revenue source that everybody's going to want to get in on, and the town's going to be trying to administer something that doesn't benefit us, that costs us, that costs town staff time, and the content may be even offensive.
Yeah, those are all policy considerations for this Board to weigh and consider, and whether or not the policy should be amended. What I'd add to that, from my point of view, is, again, the content regulation of saying, this message from this private organization is acceptable, that message from that private organization is not acceptable. And I don't want to overstate this, because, you know, these cases, when brought, are very complicated and expensive to defend, and you should work very hard to avoid them. But distinguishing between one message and the other is what, no matter what policy you go with, that's what we really have to try to avoid, in placing any administrative person in the, in the decision-making process of saying, well, that's not, that, we don't want that banner. And you could not, for instance, delegate to Jerry, you know, Jerry, you know, you can make the decision whether a banner goes up or not. It has to be according to an objective policy that you will have to draft.
Question?
Yeah, and I guess it's really not a question, it's just, I'm thinking of, as you're explaining all this, and we just talked about things like operating budgets when it came to the senior center, and we're talking about, although we like to see you often, we don't want to see you more often, if we can avoid that. I think this is, is going down a road that gets away from the original intent, as Mary said. And this is an anti-business decision to the Chamber, per se, but I do see, you know, we provide funding for Main Street. If, you know, they're using that as a source of revenue, it's something that, that they can help offset their budget with, and we contribute to their budget, then that is, and their, you know, it's town-sponsored events, that's one thing. But there definitely is a can of worms. And back to my days of selling advertising, there was always that absolute, you know, equal airtime scenario, and there's no way to guarantee equal poll time to, you know, if it's, the space is bought up.
You just, as a legislative body, you just can't make subjective judgments about the content of messages when it comes to
That's right.
Public property. And you can, like I said earlier, you can eliminate entire classes of organizations. And political organizations, good place to start, because that's the highest level of speech, where court's going to give it the most scrutiny. If you let one in, you cannot, probably cannot distinguish between this political message and that political message. So you say, okay, political organizations, that's easy. Then you say, well, religious organizations.
It's not so easy.
Actually, I would disagree, I would want to see more information on that if we, I don't think this Board is going that, but if you eliminate a class of people because you want to prohibit that speech, that has me a little worried, but...
Yeah, I think that would, and believe me, I'm the first to say, if you want to do this, we've got to look at it more carefully and more deeply than I did in this letter. But I, ultimately, I think that would be okay, because these cases come up all over the country. But political organizations, then religious organizations, both of which are private nonprofit organizations, religious organizations, same principle. Again, protected speech, both parts of the First Amendment, so...
I don't want to get into that. I don't want to get into that.
My concern is that we have a consistent policy, so that we don't have confusion, you know, on the part of either our businesses, or our nonprofits, or our volunteer groups, as to what's allowable and what's not. And, you know, like Mary had said last time, as we drive down Hot Meadow, we have the overheads, we have them along the side, we have different boards, and it's a lot to look at. And I want to make sure that we're being as fair as possible and as consistent as possible with everybody who has to drive down the street and look at every one of those signs. And I think, I agree, I don't think we should be in the business of controlling speech.
And you can't delegate the responsibility away. You can't say, well, we've given that to this organization. It's your poll, your obligation.
I think that's a good point, Cheryl, because we, we were consistent. I think when the Chamber came in, it didn't fit our policy. And so we, we said no. The Chamber came in and asked for a one-time exception, because they felt they had gone down the road in discussing that anyone could use the banners. And so they felt, in fairness, that we would allow one time. But I think that one-time exception has showed us the can of worms that we would face, you know, if we were to proceed down this path. And I think it would be helpful for us to vote tonight, because I think it's important that Jerry has some direction. I think that the policy that we, we have works. We, the only question, two clarifications, I think one would be to make sure that the Board is comfortable that the Main Street program can continue to, to organize the banners for town events, if the Board's comfortable with that. That has been our consistent policy. And two, the Performing Arts Board is no longer a town committee, but they are a town, they are town-sponsored events, and the revenue, the town does get a piece of the revenue. So that would be just a clarification, to make sure that those two entities would be the only entities that would be allowed to continue to use the poles. So that would be, let's shift, a reaffirmation of what we're currently doing.
Okay, now I need to...
Yeah, I'd just like to add that in both cases, you're talking about using the banners to advertise activities that take place on town-owned property.
Exactly. Exactly. So we would follow the policy that we've always had. And I think Jerry's sense, and Jerry, maybe you could talk a little bit about that, but your, your feeling was that four times a year is probably the max that we, we should have you feel that, because otherwise it becomes too much
Does anyone else want to?
Noise pollution, it becomes too hard on staff to raise them lower. And it really loses the effectiveness of having them. So, I don't know if you want to speak to that, Jerry?
And I would say, I would agree with Mary, and I do hear from groups, when they've been up longer than the eight weeks, I think, do we have, or it seems to be, you know, it's too much, you know, they need to come down. And the same time, you know, just from a management standpoint, you know, I think the four times a year is certainly manageable. We could always do more, but I think that would be certainly for us more manageable.
What kind of motion do you want?
Just a motion to, to not change the policy that this town's...
One more quick, Bob, are you comfortable with the fact that this policy is consistent enough with the DOT policy, that we're not going to have too many conflicts between our?
I'm comfortable with that. I think this is the type of policy that DOT sees in very, a lot of towns. Most towns have state roads somewhere within their boundaries, and usually in the Main Street area, or many are in the Main Street area. And you'll see a lot of banners over the road and on the poles, but in my experience, every one of them is of this type, where they were advertising town-sponsored events. And if DOT has a problem with a particular banner, but I don't think they have to date...
No, not to date. And we run everything by, by the DOT before they're stopped.
Yeah, the town has to get an encroachment.
Yeah, just for consistency.
Yeah, no, I think it's consistent. I think the way it's been operated is perfectly permissible with DOT regulations.
Thanks for your efforts in reviewing this. I know this is, the First Amendment rights are complicated, it's not...
Very interesting.
They are interesting, they're fun, they're fun. But we've had enough.
And a geeky kind of way. So there isn't, the two points you had made about Main Street organizing events and allowing PAC and on-town property, is that, I was just taking a quick glance through this again.
That's not been a formal policy, it's been town-sponsored events. That's been our procedure internally, because, again, Main Street was selling advertising, it was not appropriate for the town to sell banners to pay for them. The town was not going to buy the banners, and the town was not going to sell advertising to pay for the banners. So Main Street, since they were a town-sponsored organization, they were tasked with the administration of the process.
Okay, so we don't think we need to amend any of this stuff?
No, we don't need to amend anything. I just wanted to have an endorsement that the Board's comfortable with the procedures that we're following. One, that Main Street will continue to coordinate the banners, the sale. And two, since the Performing Arts Board is no longer a town entity, it's still consistent to using the banners to allow, we still have to validate that they can use the banners in order to promote the town events. So the Board has no problem with that. You don't need that in a motion. I guess we just need a motion to not change the policy.
Do we even need a motion for that?
I think it would be helpful, because I think it would show the Chamber that we've seriously considered the request, then, but it's not personal to them, we just don't want to change the policy.
So we need a motion to deny the Chamber's request to change the policy?
No, just a motion to...
Just to reaffirm the policy that was originally adopted.
Someone wants to make that motion.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I do. I've been thinking about this. I, I really have a problem with this. We have two groups that represent businesses within the town, one being Main Street, one being the Chamber. Main Street received funding from the town, the Chamber does not. The Chamber actually paid for the original brackets, bracketry, I guess would be the technical term, to put up there, and then donated them to Main Street. I really feel like we're treating two different business groups differently. I understand the, the discussion points, and I see the, the flow of the logic, it just seems wrong. And, and I'm going to be voting against it, but I'm fine where we're going, but we have to be consistent.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate that. The, you know, my alternative suggestion would be that the Parks and Rec Commission coordinate the banners, and that any revenue would go to the Parks and Rec Commission. Probably, we wouldn't do a lot of the banners, quite frankly, because we wouldn't have the time and the staff. Sinsory celebrates, the Hartford Symphony would want to do those, and Sinsory celebrates might want to do that. The difference is, the Main Street coordinated the town-sponsored events, the Chamber didn't have town-sponsored events. And the revenue, there was a significant difference in the cost. There was a, I think the Chamber charged $350, and Main Street charged, I think...
$150.
$150. So the balance would go, the balance went to the organization. So your, your point is well-taken, Mike. I have, I would support the town coordinate the banners, if you felt more comfortable with that. Because I, I feel very strongly that we can't change the policy. And I, and I don't think that we, you know, we can, you know, in fairness to the Performing Arts Board, they're not a town entity either. So if you're going to be fair, then we have to say is, that the Parks and Rec will coordinate the banners, and they'll either happen or they won't, based on the amount of time that town staff has to get sponsors. I'm comfortable with that.
You've got a motion on the floor in a second, so, I'm just trying to have discussion.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I'm happy to support that.
If you want to make an amendment.
If you want to add that as an amendment.
I'm not sure how I'd phrase that, to be honest.
Can I comment while you're thinking, maybe?
Please.
And I appreciate your position on this. I, I get, I can go back to sort of the operation, and we're talking about budgets and things like that, and culture parts and rec being strapped, and their budget being what it is, and, you know, the, the tasks that they have at hand. And I would support the original motion for that reason. I think that it's, it goes, it goes by way of those concerns that we've had around...
I take your point, Mike, I really do. I, I think the relationship that the town has with Main Street is, is different. And, you know, we have relied on them to do some of the town's work, essentially. You know, we are, we're funding them, and they are in a different position. I don't disagree with you, that both organizations promote business in town, and that's a good thing. But I don't think that we can transfer all of that responsibility that Main Street has taken on itself. And I, and I know, I see your point, that they did pay for the brackets and...
Thanks.
No, I know, but that they, you know, there's a claim there, it's true.
But no, I think Mike has a good point.
He does, yeah.
I think that for this year, I would support Main Street and the Performing Arts Board continue to do, use them the way they have, but I would ask for an accounting
Yes.
To come back to the Board, so we can see how much revenue they're generating from our property, because it is a town property.
Oh, yeah.
And perhaps we can offset those costs some other way next year. So I think, I think we, we owe that to the taxpayers, to find out what revenue's been generated. So I think your point is well-taken, I would support it. I would, for this year, I'd like to just, since we're already in the middle of the season, allow the policy to stand, but I, I support your motion to get, to get an accounting, and so we can have a further discussion.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries over. Thank you. Thanks, Bob, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Bob.
Next item is a very quick resolution, delegating oversight of the Squadron Line School Main Office project, which was approved by the voters of Spencer, to the public building committee.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any questions? Do you, a member of the Chamber of Commerce?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, did you guys?
Any opposed?
Are you guys keeping up over there?
Go ahead and vote, and then I can bring something up.
We did.
Okay.
I know it's 10:20, but you guys got to keep up.
Aye.
Mary, excuse me, I just realized, Lisa pointed out, I'm a member of the Chamber, and I should have recused myself.
I, I think you're okay, Mike, because you don't have a conflict, because you...
I did disclose it on my...
You did disclose.
And you're not getting any financial benefit, have you?
No.
Thank you, thank you.
It's like there's another paying job.
I appreciate that. So noted for the record.
Lisa's got your back.
Yeah.
I would, I don't know, I would, Robert's will of orders, can you resend the vote? If Mike feels more comfortable? Or can he change his vote?
Why don't we do that? Why don't we reopen the vote?
I would need a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make a mo, I'll make a...
I shouldn't even make the motion. I shouldn't even make a motion.
To go back to item number C.
I will make a motion to amend the agenda to go back to item number C. Letter, letter C?
Yes.
The motion, can I have a motion to reaffirm the town's existing policy?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Nancy.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any recusers?
Any abstentions?
One abstention.
I will abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
Let's just clean it that way.
I appreciate your disclosure. Thank you. Uh, next item is to approve the resolution delegating oversight of the Henry James Renovation Phase 1A Main Office, three projects above the public building.
I'll move.
Second.
Any questions?
I don't have a conference.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to discuss impossible action regarding CLMP rate increase. Town received a letter that we, um, that CLMP is, uh, looking to increase rates. Uh, the rates are significant increases. Um, they are looking, uh, they have, provided us a list of explanation of why they're looking for the increase. The increase is significant. It's really a 5.9% increase in revenues over the boss or current revenues. I have drafted a letter, um, that I would like to send to CLMP, strongly objecting to this on behalf of our residents. And certainly the timing of this, since we finalized our budget and, uh, we're not notified of this increase prior to, uh, completing our budget. And, uh, I would ask the board to endorse, uh, the letter so that we could send it from the entire board's level.
Aye, we'll move that.
I will second that.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is to approve the resignation of Vaughn Morecki as an alternate member of the zoning commission.
I'll move that.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next motion is to appoint Vaughn Morecki as a regular member of the zoning commission.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next is to appoint Sarah...
That's M-O-C-G-K, Mock?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. M-O-C-G-K.
Was there an early resignation? What, what?
Is that replacing Diana Fisk?
Yes, it is, Diana Fisk, yep.
I think we'll put that in the, uh, motion.
I think it is there. Library in succession, Diana Fisk.
It's not on the, uh, motion, yeah. I like that in the motion. Uh, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Sarah Mock in, um, uh, to regular member position of library board trustees, uh, taking the place of Diana Fisk.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, next item is an update on the Hartford Land use study. We have a meeting scheduled, uh, for June. We also have the form-based code that has been, um, on, is on our website and that will be distributed. It is, um, it is a result of a lot of hard work and from our consultants. It is on the website, www.simsburyzt.gov. The zoning commission will receive comments and a public hearing on June 16th. This is a very important zone change and code change. Uh, we will have Gateway Plan and consultants there to answer any questions. So I put it on tonight's agenda so the public will have notice that June 16th, uh, the new form-based code will be available for discussion. And, uh, we'll report back after that. Uh, just a reminder that the town hall summer hours start next week. We'll be looking for, uh, feedback on, um, from the public as to how those hours are. They're temporarily approved by the board after the summer season.
Mary, I would just ask that the record reflect that I stepped out during the discussion of the Hartford.
Thank you. The record reflect that Lisa had her, uh, removed herself in the discussion of the Hartford Land use study. Thank you. Uh, I did want a motion to amend the agenda for purposes of, uh, a letter I received, a designation of the Simsbury Community Farm as, um, on the State Register of Historic Places. Can I have a motion to...
I'll move that. Amend the agenda. I'll move that for discussion of designation of Simsbury Community Farm.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Um, I received a letter on May 23rd that I copied the board on, that, um, the nomination to put Simsbury on the State Register of Historic Places would be considered at the June 4th meeting of the Historic Preservation Council. Um, this was a, a recommendation that the, that, uh, the town did not seek and we were not notified of it until I received the letter. Um, we were, I think the community farm was approached by members of, uh, the Department of Economic and Community Development, uh, that this designation was available and would, uh, allow the town to, uh, apply for grants of, if this designation should occur. Upon receipt of the letter, I did, um, have higher impact call the State Historic Preservation Office, um, to find out what the impact would be on the town and the farm. Um, this designation, we, uh, received the following conversation, that the designation is strictly honorary, contains no restrictions. It allows the town to apply for future matching grants of up to $200,000. Um, it's the last batch of such designations, and if the town did not want to pursue this designation, uh, there would, we don't know when we would be eligible again. And, uh, there are no negative aspects of the designation. So while there was some discussions about possibly applying for this, um, a letter, we did receive a letter that we were considered, uh, without any previous knowledge. And so there is a hearing on June 4th. I do want to bring it to the board's attention and public's attention. Is, uh, is there any objection to this hearing going forward?
I'm, I'm assuming the community farm, Diane?
Yes, they sought this designation.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to put it on the agenda just to let the public know there is a grant. Um, thank you. Uh, next item is acceptance of the regular meeting minutes of May 12th. Can I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Any second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, aye, sorry.
Any abstentions?
Just checking for... Check her for a pulse.
Somebody shake Lisa.
I don't want to scare her.
Thank you. Um, we'll move to personnel items. I know you have some actual items, so we can move those quickly.
I will move them quickly. Okay, Personnel Subcommittee met, uh, we had a special meeting, um, yes, was it yesterday? Yesterday, to review job descriptions for library, planning department, culture parks and recs. All have been, um, approved by the unions and add no additional cost to the town. After discussion, the Personnel Subcommittee unanimously approved all recommendations and is presenting them to the full board for your consideration. The positions include the teen librarian, um, which includes planning, directing, implementing and evaluating the library's teen services and includes outreach. And it also includes duties to all library patrons as outlined in the reference librarian job description. The library service assistants, children's, with the upcoming retirement of the children's department circulation assistant on June 30th, we have an opportunity to create a new job description that incorporates technology and the current needs of the library. It's responsible for planning and implementing programming for children and families, includes outreach, also includes circulation, customer service. Administrative secretary, one, library part-time. During the prejudice process, we reduce this position to part-time from 35 to 17 hours per week in order to move funding to front-facing services with the teen librarian position. New position has the same duties as the full-time with additional language regarding required knowledge, skills, abilities and required physical and mental effort. Assistant town planner. With the retirements of two members of the planning staff, the town looked to update and restructure the planning department to better meet town needs. This new title effectively renames the zoning compliance officer, planning analyst position as the assistant town planner. Most of the substance of the position has been changed, was changed last August when we approved the matrix of job description adjustments in the planning department. The new title reflects the actual duties and expectations and we anticipate it will improve response and quality of the candidates anticipated to apply. The final one we considered was assistant golf course superintendent. We added, uh, under qualifications. Advanced the knowledge of turf, turf graft, turf grass disease identification and controlled fertilization practices, insect identification and control and work experience in personal management and leadership. It requires the individual to possess Connecticut DEEP golf course or custom grounds license and be knowledgeable in safe use application and record-keeping of pesticides per DEEP. I would, um, ask that we have a motion to approve all the changes as one motion instead of going through individually if that's, um, if the board is comfortable with that.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept all of the changes as proposed by the Personnel Subcommittee. As outlined in Lisa's report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Just want to thank you and the committee for excellent job in updating the job descriptions. All the jobs are, um, approved in the budget that was approved.
And thank you to Tom and, um, Sean Kimball who did, um, the substance of the work. Much appreciated. And also to the library board and Lisa Karine.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. See no further business before the board?
Well, I have one. Sorry. Quick, quick, quick. First, I want to thank everyone who participated in the Tri-Simsbury event. It was a huge success. Kudos to, um, Linda Schofield for her organization. It did bring in seven, 75% of participants were from out of town, so, which was its goal. And then I just wanted to thank everyone who, Cheryl came and Mary too, senior citizen night, art night at the high school was our most well ever. Biggest attended event. We had tons of kids. There was wonderful, huge success. So thank you. That's it, I'm done. Let's go.
Can I have a motion to...
Adjourn.
We're not approving anything else.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
That's not our longest, is that our longest? Well, we started at 6:30, so if you figured that in, that's great, yeah.
It's our longest.